It is seven o'clock. We will now start our town council meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. We begin with the public who is here with us today. If you could please state your name and address and try and keep your comments to five minutes in the interest of others who may wish to speak.
Good evening. My name is Emily Colini and I am at 30 High Street. And I am also speaking on behalf tonight of Sarah Burns, who couldn't attend today but is at 3 Hidden Spring Lane. She, Sarah, sent an email today and mostly I'm going to be reading the text of that aloud into the record tonight. So, thanks for the time. Sarah and I both followed the FHS building committee process very carefully, as most of you know, and we thought that separating the decision about the 1928 building from the new building referendum was a thoughtful and a wise choice at the time. We understand that many town residents have sentimental memories of the historic building. Sarah and I are both transplants to the area but can appreciate the history and the feelings that those residents have. When we saw this survey about the 1928 building, we both took the opportunity to complete it, but parts of it were surprising to us. We were surprised to see the questions about preserving other parts of the current FHS facility in addition to that 1928 building. We were not aware that that was a possibility and throughout the FHS building committee process, it was our understanding that the deficiencies of those existing structures, the lack of ADA compliance, the lack of compliance with safety regulations, and the issues of basic maintenance were all, made it clear that it would not be a wise investment of taxpayer dollars to try and bring these buildings back into compliance. And so, it's our opinion that if it was not wise to use taxpayer money for these buildings a few years ago when the vote was taken, it should not be wise to use taxpayer money to do it now. In addition to the illusion of like a flip-flop, like we told everybody they shouldn't be saved and now we're considering saving them, we worry about the impact of saving these buildings on the current plans for the new FHS because it's our understanding that there are plans for the use of the footprints of those buildings. So, it's our thoughts that there's more pressing and important concerns that will require taxpayer investments. We know there's issues at the fire station that need to be addressed, capital projects that the town manager is already thinking and planning for, and that third bridge that everybody always, always talks about and would like to help with that traffic. So, creating a new building committee to reexamine an issue that was presented to the town to justify the new FHS is, in our opinion, not fiscally responsible. Using taxpayer dollars to completely renovate buildings that were supposed to be demolished because of their inadequacies is also not fiscally responsible. So, we would ask the council to please consider spending the minimum needed to preserve the 1928 building facade and use tax dollars to address other needs here in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Seeing none. Do we have any public online?
I have one.
Oh, sorry.
I thought maybe I was just working on. Speaking of that bridge. Hello, my name is Jeff Elmer. I live at 1 Debra Lane. And that's a perfect way to segue into my, why I'm here tonight. I will read a little statement. When I moved here in 2003, I drove around the town and I noticed that you had to drive around the river to get from one end to the other. As a former resident of Southington, I found this kind of odd because in Southington we have lots of shortcuts to get to numerous places. Fast forward nineteen years, the observation of traveling around the river in the middle of town grew even more. Then these past two years, I've noticed a bit of a nuance, nuisance to me as I'm driving my daughter back and forth to high school. The previous years, I lived over by East Farms and IAR, so I never really took it into consideration what a trouble it is sometimes. So, the first year of high school wasn't that bad, but it did awaken me to the fact that we need a shortcut in town to get to various places from all directions. This year, however, while driving my daughter's friend to school with her every day, it became more apparent that something seriously needs to be done. Her friend lives over on Chapel Road, which is just off Red Oak Hill. So, my choices each day are to go either through Unionville via Route 177 down to Route 4, or I can go down Red Oak Hill to Garden Street, which I normally do. Then I take that to 4, which takes me to the high school. So, either way, if you think about it, and I've done the timing on this, it takes about 15 minutes to go either way to get to the high school. I've recognized that Toro Loco is about the center point in our town, if you go either way. So, that's kind of what I'm judging my, my thoughts on right now. So, I've researched many ways to get from Route 4 to Route 4 from Red Oak Hill and vice versa, and I found that the road and a bridge from the Red Oak Hill next to Tunxus Mead entrance connecting to Brickyard Road would cut the time in half. And I've done that research. If it takes 15 minutes to go this way, 15 minutes to go that way, if we had a bridge that if you enter it next to Tunxus Mead and came across a river, you would come out at Brickyard Road. That would take about seven minutes to complete, five to seven minutes versus 15. So, I've come up with a little bit, a couple of diagrams, and I pulled the report from 1998. So, I'm a little bit aware of where people were trying to go to and thinking about going to. This diagram right here, if you can see the blue, it's kind of our town in a nutshell. It's, it's where we travel daily. If you see the red, that's going around the river. That's where we really travel every day, from all different directions. You either, you gotta go to Unionville, or you go up past Miss Porter's and down to Route 10. So, what I'm proposing is, if you see the yellow, that's the road I'm proposing, that if you go down the tree line by Tunxus Mead, you do not interrupt Tunxus Mead at all. Some people have said, well, you can't cut through the recreation center and stuff like that. It's not interfering with that whatsoever. You're coming down the tree line, which is owned by the town of Farmington. You're coming across the river, and the only thing that I can see right now is there's a company called Plant 17 LLC, which I believe is out of Plainville. So, that has some property right there that you would have to cut across and connect up with Brickyard Road. Obviously, that's not something that I need to be involved in right now. This is just my idea. But I have two entry points. I could either come down and cut across the river and hook up with their gravel road that they've got going through, down there already, or I could come across and, and enter at a different section, which would then shorten their property usage and it would still connect to Brickyard eventually. So, this is a little, another diagram that I have. It's basically, shows you, if you enter here and you come up to that point, you could either come around and go to Brickyard, or you could enter there and go down their gravel road. And if you didn't want to come up to this point, we could cut right across that field. So, this is my, I've, I've talked to people on Facebook. Everybody talks about the 1998 proposal. I've looked at that and what I saw, and I have some maps here or some diagrams from that, is people were talking about going down New Britain Avenue and just, it looks like they were going to cut right through neighborhoods. Like literally, there's, there's houses that they were just going to cut right through and they were going to end up at Brickyard eventually as well. And then I heard about the bridge that was going to come over here to Town Hall, which I didn't really understand that one either because you still had to go down New Britain Avenue almost to the police station, and then they were just going to cut right across, which if I look out here, there's a house there and a garage there, which I think they were going to offset the bridge or something like that. But if I've got to go down that far anyway, I can just come to Unionville and come right around. So, like my timings have suggested, if it's 15 minutes either way, it's seven my way. So, I cut everything in half. The other thing that I noticed too-
Before you go too much farther, I'm just going to tell you, you're at six minutes right now.
I'm sorry. Okay. If you come down from the north from Avon and whatnot, you have to go either way to get to Bristol and to Route 6 and stuff like that. That right there, my coming down Brickyard Road, like I said, it's a gateway to other towns. And it could be built that way, and it could also be built in such a way that it could be a historic bridge. It could, it could really put the name Farmington in connecting everybody together in, on the map. So, that's what I would like to propose, and if we could look into it, that would be great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Here. Now we will go to online. Kat?
There are two hands raised right now. The first one is Tim Kelly.
Tim Kelly.
Okay. Can you hear me okay in the room?
Just fine.
Great. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. When I heard we were now studying how to keep the majority of the old high school facility, I wasn't sure how to react. We have spent eight years and millions of dollars analyzing the facility issues up on Monte Thrive. The town, through public and private means, aggressively marketed to the citizens that constructing a whole new high school building would be the best, only way to meet our student and community needs going forward. A PR firm was hired for the campaign. There was extensive door-to-door canvassing, some social media badgering, et cetera. The message was clear. The 1928 building was not fit for habitation decrepit. Her auditorium was in horrible shape. Facility roofs were leaking and unreparable. Ventilation was very bad. Gyms were much too old, especially, especially the 70-year-old JV gym. The building had an unfixable sewage problem, and the entire facility was unsafe, inaccessible, and an embarrassment to Farmington. So, with your leadership, the residents agreed to commit $140 million for a new high school complex, biggest project in Farmington history. And we would incorporate the 900 wing in order to move the superintendent's staff out of Town Hall and triple their central office space. This, of course, would free up room in the Town Hall to make additional space for other departments or groups. Everybody seemed pleased, although a little nervous about the tax burden. Now, less than a year later, today, we haven't even broken ground yet on the new facility and are talking about reno restoring a large part of the old high school. This feels like a huge bait and switch. At a minimum, this discussion opens up a can of worms. The recent survey is obviously skewed toward a positive outcome. It's very open-ended, no specifics on short-term or long-term costs. It references free funding sources, i.e., the always-attractive "somebody else pays", and almost two-thirds of respondents are female, which is not representative. To get a full sense of where this takes us, you, you really need to read all the survey write-in comments. By the way, my favorite was, quote, Johnny Carrier is the hardest-working guy in local government. So, John, at least we know your wife submitted her survey on time. Look, I know the 1928 building has been a big emotional issue throughout this process. And last year, we agreed to table the issue for a separate up-down vote this year. Well, let's just have that vote. So, Farmington, let's not lose our focus. If we're going to broadly expand the scope of this and contemplate spending tens of millions of dollars on a multi-wing reno reclamation project for the old high school, then we should immediately halt efforts on the new high school building since we haven't even broken ground. Sometime this evening, the council will likely be asked to vote on setting up yet another Blue Ribbon Commission to ferret out what to do with all the possibilities related to the old sprawling Farmington High School, which is slated to be demolished. You should not do this. Instead, stay on course with the original plan for a simple up-down vote on the 1928 building. Either we agree to spend $10 million to remission it, or demolish on schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next?
Next, we have Stacy Petrazella.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Stacy.
Thank you. 32 High Street, Stacy Petrazella. In February 2021, Town Council made a motion to remove the demolition of the 1928 building from the FHS building project and establish a charge for the 1928 building after successful passage of the high school project. In June 2021, the town of Farmington approved the high school project, plans that included a new build and the demolition of the 1952, 1964, and 1978 buildings. I was surprised to see questions about saving those three buildings on a survey this spring as they were, as the voters already decided what to do with those buildings. It's a betrayal of public trust to now start creating committees to save and repurpose them. Voters have to have faith that when they vote yes on a referendum, Town Council won't change their mind. I encourage you tonight to stick with the decision you made in February 2021 and then publicize to voters prior to the referendum and only establish a charge for the 1928 building. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, Kat?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, we will move on to Item D. Consideration of Special Topics. Okay. This is going to be our presentation on the 1928 Building Survey. The results, Brooke Mitchell for the Center of Research and Public Policy will be giving us this presentation. Thank you very much.
Right here. Okay. Hello, everyone. You'll have to bear with me as this is personally, aside from meetings, my first time giving a presentation in person in two years, so I have to remember to speak to you all, not the computer screen. So, thank you for having me. My name is Brooke Mitchell. I'm with the Center for Research and Public Policy. We're based out of Vermont. We have worked with the, the council before doing the 2018 survey for, when you were just exploring interest and figuring out what the town wanted to do with the, with the high school. So, that's been moved on. So, this time, the, the ad hoc committee came to us looking to explore options and get, learn the overall interest and provide the public, the opportunity to provide feedback and input into the process for, in keeping the 1928 and 1952 and 1978 buildings. Making sure I get those correct. So, again, introduction. This process was, started with the ad hoc committee of, again, we just, was conducted to collect resident input regarding potential options for the 1928 buildings as well as the others. Ideas ranged from demolishing the buildings to keeping the portions of the existing high school for other purposes. The survey included the following in areas for investigation, just overall views on the disposition of the old existing Farmington High School. Support or opposition in retaining the 1928 building, potential uses for that building, support or opposition in retaining the 1952 and 78 buildings and the potential uses of those buildings as well. So, as for the methodology, so, using quantitative, quantitative research design, we received 974 responses online and 23 hard copy surveys among Farmington and Unionville, Connecticut residents for a total of 997 responses. Now, I do want to, just as an aside, note that 997 responses is a terrific response. Just to put it broadly for our national polling clients to get a sense of the nation, we usually shoot for 1,000 responses. So, when you take that and put it in a smaller town like Farmington, you get a really good idea and glimpse as to what the input and the feedback is of this community. Again, just in 2018, we just did a phone survey, 400. So, this is a tremendous effort by the town to try to open this and be as inclusive as possible for the survey for the residents to provide their input on this process. So, all the surveys were conducted between, or completed between March 14th and April 11th. Statistically speaking, that provides a margin of error of 3.05 at the 95% confidence level with that many completes. So, we programmed the survey online again, and we accepted hard copies. We entered those by hand. We worked together with the committee to formulate the questions. We both signed off on it. And then the town did an every-door direct mailing postcard, distributed those to households to 13,000 households, residences in Farmington and Unionville. 200 additional postcards were distributed throughout town. The survey link was broadcast as well. Hard copies were at four different locations throughout Farmington and Unionville. And then the survey process was also covered by local press. So, into the summary of findings. The survey started with the background of the process. So, we provided this visual from the town that was provided to us, and we explained again what buildings we were talking about. We wanted to make sure all the residents had a clear idea of what we were talking about, which buildings we were talking about prior to taking the survey. So, again, this is just verbatim from the survey itself, just talking about the 2003 building that you'll see on the right side of the, the graphic was going to be retained and that the focus of the conversation was the 1928, the 1952, 1978 buildings. So, to get into the details. So, without knowing associated costs or many details about retaining the building or demolition or the process, we asked, how, what is your view about this process? Are you interested in keeping the buildings? 20.6% said these buildings should be torn down. Remaining 73.7% said that we should look at retaining some of these buildings for needed space and municipal services. So, specifically on the 1928 building, we reminded folks again which buildings we were specifically talking about, the one in the green at the bottom of the graphic on your And again, without considering the cost of the renovations to potentially relocate services into the 20, 1928 building, over three-quarters of respondents, 73.8%, strongly or somewhat supported retaining the building. Just under one-fifth suggested they somewhat or strongly are opposed. 13.1% were strongly opposed. Now, here's where we introduce some information about the potential costs of this process. So, we said that the estimated cost of $9.8 million would be to renovate and preserve the building. We explained that. Now, support drops slightly of retaining the building to 65.6%. So, you go from your 77% without a lot of information, and then with a little bit of information about the cost, drops down. However, with the suggestion that the potential for the federal government American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds would, could be designated to pay a portion of the renovation and the repurposing of the 1928 building, support drops, or no, goes slightly up again to 75.6% that strongly support or somewhat support this process. Again, 13.5% saying they strongly oppose. So, you'll see a little bit of a dip when you start to talk some numbers, but there is some general interest in the 1928 building. Now, so for those that were opposed to retaining the 1928 building, we asked them, what are some reasons that you would be, that you would be opposed? This was a multiple-response question. 67.3% suggest not willing to pay more in taxes. 62.4, it's not sentimental to me. And downward, we asked, we left an open-ended response in the other selection, and other responses, verbatim, were buildings were in poor condition, they were inefficient, it's old, they questioned the tax implications of this. There's, there's, you could create a new, longer-lasting building for less expensive, use money for other purposes, question need for space. So, those were some of the open-ended response, verbatim responses. So, as for the potential use of the 1928 building, regardless if you support or oppose retaining the 1928 building, we asked, what would, could you see the potential use of the building being? So, in the far-left column, you'll see 64% said community use, they would be interested in it. Relocating the Social Services Department was at 58% and less so, 36.8% stating relocating to probate court. Now, we took it upon ourselves to run this question by those who support retaining the building and those who oppose retaining the building, just to see what the difference of interest and potential for the uses for the building were. So, you'll see in the middle column, 75.2% of those that support with ARPA funds retaining the building were interested in community use and so on. 69.9% for social services. So, for those that oppose, you'll see behind the little box, it, well, it says 50-point something. I'll catch up over here. I think that was 50%, 50.7%, but 26.5% stating community use, 23.3% relocating the Social Services Department and Recreation Department. So, in an open-end response, we received 306 responses where we asked residents to provide any other suggestion for what could specifically the 1928 building could be used for. So, we tabulated those all up. For the most part, locate the Town Hall, Town Services, Recreation Use, Continuing Education, Adult Education, and further on, down below, you have Food Pantry, Community Kitchen. This continues on to the next slide. You have other uses that were provided in here as well. So, those were all tabulated by us. So, on to the 1952 and 1978 buildings specifically. We remind respondents that we're focusing this section of the survey on these buildings in addition or on their own. So, once again, without considering the needs or the costs to renovate, repurpose these buildings, we have 56.9% saying that we should look at retaining these buildings in order to retain for additional uses. 21.7% saying that these buildings should be demolished with the exception of the 1928 building. And then you have the 13.8 that said that all buildings should be demolished, including So, once again, we suggest that, you know, that we could be using the ARPA funds for these buildings, the 1952 and the 1978 buildings. What would your support be in retaining these buildings? Support comes in at 61.8%, which is slightly up from the previous slide that said 56.9% were interested in saving these buildings. So, once again, with a little additional support with additional funds, support jumps up a little bit further. So, once again, we, well, we asked potential uses for the 52 and the 78 buildings. This was a multiple-response question. Regardless if you support or oppose it, what could these, what could the buildings potentially be used for? So, at the top of the list, we have keeping the gym- So at the top of the list, we have keeping the gyms, creating a recreational center, sixty-four point eight percent. Community use, fifty point seven. Further down, social services department, recreation department, down to nineteen point seven, space for additional town storage. Eighteen percent saying none of these. So with that, we left another open-ended question for respondents to provide any, an opportunity to provide other uses for the fifty-two and the seventy-eight buildings specifically. So these were some of their responses. We tabulated those open-ended responses. There were a hundred and eighty-one of them. Recreation services, again, came up on top. Pool, locating the town hall, continuing education, all the way down, boys and girl scouts, down to club use, cafe, student education and use and housing. And then in closing, we left an open-ended response just to provide the council, the committee with any closing thoughts that they had regarding this process. There were two hundred and eighty-six some lengthy responses. We did not tabulate these up. As you can imagine, they were pretty broad in speaking and hard to put into categories. So those verbatim responses were provided to the council and the committee. So those should be available too. So on demographics, the committee asked me to include these as well. So of the respondents, ninety-six point seven indicated that they were registered to vote in Farmington. Years lived in Farmington. The average was twenty-six point seven or twenty, yes, twenty-six point seven percent or twenty-six point seven years, sorry. And then I did want to include a comparison to your two thousand and eighteen survey, the phone survey that we did among residents. The average then was twenty-five years as well. As far as age, this is the age breakdown. I included the two thousand and eighteen age breakdown as well, just for general comparison. And then male and female with thirty-three point five percent male, sixty point seven percent female, and then others preferring not to answer, non-binary, prefer to self-describe. And hidden behind that little flip, in two thousand and eighteen, just for comparison, there were, I might have that written on the other sheet.
Forty-three males.
Oh, there, thank you. Appreciate it. So forty-three percent male and fifty-seven percent female was in, was taken in the two thousand and eighteen survey. Again, that was a, our interviewer, since it was a phone survey, our interviewers described their gender based on their phone call. And what is important to note that, you know, for male, thirty-three percent of the survey is almost three hundred and fifty respondents, respond, yeah, respondents. And then almost six hundred females essentially is sixty percent. So what we look for in this is getting enough completes from each gender to really look into the cross-tabulations. We really count on those numbers to be high to really, to break down male versus female versus all of these questions. So I'll put up, I'll finish that statement. But in the cross-tabulations, which I'll display at the end of this slide, you'll be able to see the breakdown of each. So we usually at minimum require about fifty responses in a demographic to consider doing, running a cross-tabulation for it to be any of any statistical validity. So you can imagine that over three hundred responses from males, six hundred from females gives you a general idea of how each of those genders are responding. And then on children, we just asked, you know, do you have children? Of what age, of school age? Have they attended? Are they older? So these were the breakdowns of the two thousand and eighteen survey. We kept those questions essentially the same because we wanted to see the comparisons of them. Generally speaking, there were a few folks that, a few more folks that had children that completed the survey than the last time in two thousand and eighteen, just for general comparison. But overall, pretty, pretty close, close in numbers. So I will say thank you at this point, but I do just want to slide on past and just show what the cross-tabulations of the data look like. If you run a fine, number of years lived in Farmington, age breakdown, whether you have children or not, male versus female. So if you have time, those numbers are very interesting and provide some input insight into the town. So without, I know, I think I had a twenty to thirty-minute time slot, so I know I probably breezed through that. So I hope that was enough information for right now, but I'm open for any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. And we have all the hard copies and that will be available to the public online. So anyone who wants to dig any deeper into that can get all further details. Just the last thing you were going through were all the, the demographics, the statistics on that. It was, the comment was made during public comment that this survey could have been skewed. How would you respond to that in light of the numbers of respondents and the percentages in different areas?
As far as skewed, I don't believe that's a correct, a great interpretation of it. I think with the amount of responses that you have this, again, you sought out to be an open and inclusive survey that really asked the town for what their opinions were, how they felt about this. And with the, you know, separating it by male versus female, and if that's the route you want to go, there's a lot of, and then you break it down into the cross-tabulations, there's a lot within each of those demographics that really gives you a glimpse of to that specific demographic of, that are taking the survey. So, you know, we, we pay attention to that a lot more when we're doing a phone survey. We're really trying to dig into an exact, getting very close to census. Something like this, we do see surveys skewed towards females. Females are just a little more open to taking surveys, self-selecting surveys. So we usually see that in any survey that we conduct, phone, online, you, you do see females a little more open to survey-taking in the first place. So I, I think when you think of how many responses came in under each male and female, that's a big factor, as well as the fact that there was five percent that did not, just preferred not to answer, provide that. So that's five percent right there that could be one or the other. So and that subtracts and adds to both the male and the female responses. And we didn't have that in the last survey as well.
Great, thank you. I will now open it up to questions from the council.
Did you see that towards the end, there were more survey responses generated?
I think there was a strong push at the last week, I believe, was a good, strong push to the finish. I think there was a press, a good article out that came out like two days before we wrapped up, I believe. So that generated a strong finish as well. So yes, I would say, I, I can't, trying to think of how it went in my head, but that's usually how we see it go to folks see the deadline impending and realize they didn't take it. So got the answers in. I can't specifically say yes or no.
And then in terms of how folks were able to log on, so you know, you've got the, the address and you could click it. Those are, how could we, how do we know that they were all Farmington residents other than them saying I'm a Farmington or Unionville resident?
I mean, we have the ability to see the, you know, where surveys are being taken from. We're able to make sure that they are taken from a certain area. However, folks might be taking the survey from vacation, and I, I think I said this in the committee meeting, from vacation on Mexico, which we saw when somebody was on the beach in Mexico somewhere. So, you know, folks, we generally don't find that someone from another town is trying to get into these surveys. We pay very close attention to where these IP addresses are. We do go through and we check and we make sure that a lot of them are Farmington and they're.
I didn't mean to suggest that somebody outside of town would actually be interested in what we're doing in Farmington for our nineteen twenty-eight and.
Yeah. We, it's, it's, yes, we generally don't find that people go around trying to take surveys that don't really apply to them. I know there's always concerns for something like that, but there's, that wasn't.
So we heard from public comment that folks are a little concerned about sort of the quote-unquote skew in terms of female versus male. But how does this survey just in general track with the one that we did in two thousand and eighteen and just generally? Is this like what you usually see in terms of the numbers? And if you looked at the two thousand and eighteen numbers, most of those are fairly similar, maybe like a couple of percentage points different between what we received for this survey as opposed to two thousand and eighteen. So could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so when we went through this, we did take some comparisons from the two thousand and eighteen survey, and that was a telephone survey. That's something, we use a telephone survey for the most part when a town is ready to go to referendum, when they're ready to go to ballot, when they have specific numbers and they're looking to see how the town falls and, and what to do about that. So something like that, we, we really, really pay attention to making sure that we get a great representative sample of the town. So and what we found in the past that, and we've sometimes done a telephone survey and an open online survey at the same time, at the same time. For example, the city of Boulder did a survey. We did a phone survey for them, and then we did an online survey like this. And results were really not far off of each other, while the, some of the demographics were slightly off, not entirely. The, the general answers of the survey were pretty much spot-on too. So it's really interesting how that plays out. So this doesn't concern us if there's skewing, especially with so many respondents. Doesn't concern us when you're trying to do an open and inclusive process like you are right now. So I think that it was greatly done with the, and as you increase the number of respondents, you really minimize any reason for concern.
Thank you.
Johnny, did you have a question?
No.
I was just curious, did you track phone usage as opposed to computer usage?
We can see that. I don't think we actually, I don't have a number for you, but I know exactly where you're going. I don't, I, that would just take one quick, simple run of data for you, but that's not something that I have on hand. But yes, we can see the, you know, the operating system and a desktop system as well. So I can give you detailed.
I would actually be curious of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Did you track, as, you know, one of the questions I was, did you track the daily income of, of surveys over time?
Yes, we can run something like that for you. I think every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we provided an update on the number of completions of the survey. So I think if we search back in those emails, we can give you every other day or I can kind of give you just, we can try to make some fun graph out of that too and see where, how fast those responses came in. But yes, we can see the computers and the exact time that those responses came in.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
One of the things that we talked about in our ad hoc committee is you really don't give an analysis. It's just the data that's being shown throughout the presentation. But do you think you could comment a little bit? I mean, I think the committee's objective was sorted to just get the pulse of the community on some of these things and have a, an open-ended survey. And do you think this is, you know, again, giving us pretty good direction? To my perspective, it seems like it is with these numbers, how many people we had respond and the percentages of strongly supporting and even supporting the other building. Is that, is that accurate or maybe you can talk about that a little bit?
Sure, and I, I know we discussed this a little bit then too. As far as using this survey to help guide your process, I think that's a great interpretation of it. And I think you'll see some pretty clear differences in the nineteen twenty-eight building versus the fifty-two and the seventy-eight building. And the fact that, you know, seventy, over seventy-five percent of respondents were interested in retaining the nineteen twenty-eight building versus, you know, went from fifty-six at one point to sixty, mid-sixty percentage for the fifty-two and the seventy-eight building. So, you know, when you're, when you're up in the mid, you know, seventy-five percent interested, supportive of the process for the nineteen twenty-eight, I think that's a great guidance to say that folks are interested in retaining this building. You know, but that could also be for different uses too. So I think going through and interpreting, and that's what we could also help it with in addition to this, dive into it a little bit further as you continue your decision-making process and guiding your proposals to the community, seeing exactly who was interested in what. We can really dive through that data too. Where, you know, the fifty-two and the seventy-eight buildings with fifty to sixty percent support, you know, I think that's some cause for, you know, thinking about it a little bit further. But as far as the nineteen twenty-eight building, I think you're guided in a direction to, enough to respond to the community in that route as well. So I think it should give you some guidance.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, appreciate that. That was a great presentation. Now we can move on. Item D two.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached ad hoc nineteen twenty-eight building committee recommendations.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy? And Kat?
Okay, good evening. I'm here tonight to present the nineteen twenty-eight ad hoc building committee's recommendations. So first, I just wanted to let the members of the public and the audience know who was on our committee. So we had CJ Thomas, Johnny Carrier, Edward, myself, Russ Arnold, our director of public works, and a Kat. The history is that the ad hoc, the ad hoc nineteen twenty-eight building committee was established on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to work with town staff to make recommendations to the town council on the next steps concerning the nineteen twenty-eight building. After receiving consensus from the town council, the ad hoc committee contracted with the Center for Research and Public Policy to conduct a community survey to collect resident input regarding potential options for the historic nineteen twenty-eight building as well as the nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-four, and nineteen seventy-eight buildings. The ad hoc committee has based their recommendations on these findings. The nineteen, the ad hoc nineteen twenty-eight building committee, the survey results indicated strong support for retaining the nineteen twenty-eight building and support for retaining the nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-four, and nineteen seventy-eight sections. Again, if you look at the chart and Kat will kind of show it, the areas that we're looking at is the green in the nineteen twenty-eight, the nineteen fifty-two, the nineteen seventy-eight, and the nineteen sixty-four. Recommendation number one, based on the results of the survey and the needs of the town, the ad hoc committee is recommending, one, that the town council accept the ad hocs committee statement of needs, and two, establish a building committee per chapter fifty-three of the town code, which outlines the building committee process. Their second recommendation is that the ad hoc committee is recommending that the town council charge a nineteen twenty-eight building committee with evaluating four various options. Option one. Option one is to engage an architect to complete a conceptual design and a third-party cost estimator to provide preliminary pricing for the renovation of the nineteen twenty-eight building as a standalone building. And as you can see there, that's the nineteen twenty-eight building in the bottom with the green building. And it's based on the. building, and, um, it's based on the results of the survey and the needs of the town, um, that the committee is recommending that we establish a building committee for a standalone project. The ad hoc committee has determined that based on a high-level needs assessment, a renovation of the 1928 building can satisfy the space needs of the town. 77.8% of the respondents to the survey expressed support of retaining the 1928 building. 75.6% support retaining the 1928 building when art funds could be used to pay for a portion of the project. So that's why we're making this recommendation. Option two is to engage an architect to complete a conceptual design and a third-party cost estimator to provide preliminary pricing for the renovation of the 1928 building and the retention of the 1952, 1964, and 1978 portions for the purpose of utilizing gym space with no immediate, with no immediate renovations. So why are we recommending that? The ad hoc committee's high-level assessment indicated a need for gym space in town. The ad hoc committee assessed the ability to keep the existing gym space, which is in close proximity to the 1928 building. And maybe Kat, you could show where that gym space is on, on the map. Uh, the ad hoc committee believed that further investigation was warranted, therefore included relate, questions related to the retention of these portions in the townwide survey. There is also financial considerations for this option. The ad hoc committee understands that the gym space would not require renovation at this time. Additionally, the need to replace the exterior wall on the back of the 1928 building and install a new boiler is not needed in this option. It is possible that this option could be less expensive than a standalone project while meeting the need for gym space. And Kat, maybe we could talk a little bit more about that.
Yep, in option one with the standalone project, a significant cost would be to build back this exterior wall that would be removed in demolition of the other portions. Now, this is a three-story building you're gonna have to build back up, because when demolition of these occur, it'll kind of look like a dollhouse with the back exposed because it has been detached from the current facility. So that's a major significant cost to rebuild again that three-story facade. There's also a boiler that services the 1928 building in this wing of the 1952 portion. If it's a standalone building, that boiler does need to be replaced new in the standalone 1928 building. One final consideration is when you are kind of buttoning up the building and building that exterior wall, it would only be this tiny little portion here where it detaches from the 2003 wing, which is a one-story building rather than that three-story facade.
So again, to summarize it, the building committee felt that, I mean, yeah, our, our ad hoc committee, I'm sorry, felt that it potentially could even be less expensive by keeping the other parts of the building, and so they felt that that warranted, um, an option. So option three is to receive a range of preliminary cost estimates, cost estimates for the full renovation of the 1952, 1964, and 1978 portions if option two is ultimately chosen, to assess what the future long-term capital needs would be. Why? Option two, as we just described, did not include the renovation cost for the 1952, 1964, and 1978 options. The ad hoc committee understands that renovations would likely be needed in the future. The ad hoc committee recommends that these recommended, these renovations be phased in in a long-term capital plan. A range of preliminary cost estimates should be received to assist in this long-term capital planning and also to evaluate if this is even a feasible option. So Kat, maybe we could talk a little bit about that too.
The ad hoc committee felt it was important to get a range of cost estimates for potential long-term renovations. For example, in the auditorium area, because the future use of that is unknown, the range could be from, you know, a smaller amount to do storage, you know, use that space for storage or meeting space, whereas if it was to become a community theater or use it for auditorium, that would be a more costly renovation. So this way you could get the full spectrum of what potential uses could be and the associated
Option four, receive a range of preliminary cost estimates for the demolition of town hall, the replacement of the ball field locate, the replacement of the ball field located on the town hall site, and any associated site work. Why? The retention of the 1952, 1964, and 1978 buildings displace a ball field that is included in the Farmington High School building site plan. It has been determined that the only place the ball field could be relocated is in the existing town hall site. The ad hoc committee recommends that a range of preliminary cost estimates be obtained to demolish the town hall, complete required site work, and construct the ball field in its place. If this is deemed feasible, the town operations would be moved to the 1928 building.
And again, this is just a feasibility study to see if it would be financially prudent to replace the lost ball field here, see what those demolition costs, the construction costs to rebuild that field would be, um, because again, this has been determined as the only place that would be a possible option to keep a ball field on this municipal campus.
And then obviously we dem- demolition the town hall and the town hall operations would move into the 1928 building. And so the committee felt like this was something that if we're studying these things, it would be worthwhile to study and get a price estimate for that. So our recommendation number three from our committee is the ad hoc committee has determined that a referendum should be held by April or May 2023 to align with the schedules of both the 1928 project and the Farmington High School project. So in summary of our recommendations, one was to approve the statement of needs and create a 1928 building, uh, char- building committee. Two, charge the 1928 building committee with evaluating four options. And three, have a townwide referendum should be held by April or May of 2023. This was the unanimous support of these recommendations by our ad hoc committee. I don't know if, uh, any members of our ad hoc committee would like to add anything to this presentation, but we'd be, all of us would be open to answering any questions.
Ed, Johnny, any, any added comments?
Uh, yes, I, a couple, actually. Um, I think, you know, this is a, a good response to a very high-level view. Um, the 1928 was left open-ended, and when the high school project, which I've spent many years and thousands of hours discussing, um, has been stated tonight in, in public comment, and I've heard in the past how, you know, how, how we should, we should be looking at this if it wasn't good for the high school, but the high school project was something that had many tentacles. It wasn't just, is this building in, in disrepair, or is this space good? You know, things like gym space for state finals is too small. Where do we put kids if we're renovating? Are we disrupting two years of classroom, uh, and programmatic needs? Are we disrupting five years if it's a renovation? So to, you know, the, some of the comments of simply stating that this building is, is not adequate now, uh, and why should we reconsidering it? My thoughts are that, you know, whether there's an opportunity or not, and I'm in no position to sit here and say it is or isn't, this is a fact-finding mission of trying to get the overall costs on a building that may have potential uses, and the survey was given as guidance to see what the appetite for the town was, and if that would have come back overwhelmingly no, then we wouldn't be sitting here tonight discussing options and recommendations. We are just giving this one opportunity because after next year, that opportunity doesn't exist anymore. So I think we're just giving, uh, the town, uh, uh, constituents, the, the people who live in Farmington, the taxpayers, and all those things are, are big things, to at least look at it and give, uh, the adequate information to make a good determination. Um, the, you know, again, going back to the, the high school, I think we have to be very careful how we, we put those two things together. The last thing I'll say is the 1928, as it was stated in public com, that was separated from the high school because they were two separate, uh, buildings or two separate issues altogether. Uh, we weren't looking to complicate the high school needs with, with, uh, you know, the needs of a, of a historic building and where people are coming from in their decision-making.
Before we go on, uh, Kathy, did you have?
I just wanted to make one comment, maybe it would be helpful too, um, with one thing that Johnny said is that the options, and we haven't got to it because it would be the charge at, when you guys come up with the charge, but I think the thought process was, is that this committee, this new building committee, if the council chooses to do that, would evaluate these options and come back to the council, and then the council would look at those options and make a final decision.
Correct.
And I think that's an important point, is that when you say it's a fact-finding mission, it is for the town councils, that the building committee's charged with looking at these different options, the standalone and then the other ones, and then the council, they come back with those options, and then the council says, this is the option we're going with. And I think the ad hoc committee felt that it was important to know some of these different things, because as you said, then it's gone. And so that's, I think, just wanted to say that that would be part of the charge later on.
Yep, thank you. Uh, the committee, so, uh, Ed?
Yep, and, um, actually what I was gonna say was, uh, kind of exactly what you said there, Kathy, just reiterating that, um, we're not really necessarily endorsing any of these options. We're just doing the due diligence of, you know, we assessed what the town's needs were, we put out the survey, we saw that there was interest in learning more about some of these different, um, retaining some of these buildings, and, um, this recommendation is really just to look further into it, to get those preliminary cost estimates, um, and see what makes sense based on the needs of the town and, and what we can afford.
Thank you, Ed. Um, yeah, I, I'll just add, uh, because I think it was very well said, uh, by everyone on the committee so far. It would really be, um, irresponsible of the town council not to look into the options of the 1928 building, and when we, uh, began those discussions, that large wall and the cost involved with replacing that one wall of the 1928 building led us to look into the other sections there. Uh, we are trying to get the proper information so that the town council can bring that information to the public, so the public can decide what ultimately will be done. Uh, clearly, the public supports keeping the 1928 building. Uh, we're trying to find out, none of us can make a decision on what's the best thing to do with the rest of that section until we get more information, and that's what we're doing right now. Uh, I think that's the charge of the 1928 building committee, and that's what we're following through on. So I, I would not, I'd, I'd ask people to, uh, refrain from jumping too far ahead before we actually get the facts in. So with that, um, I'll just open up to questions for the rest of the council. Rafina?
So, I, I completely understand where the building committee's thought process is, but for a lot of folks who followed the Farmington High School building, um, project, the high school building project, I should say, it seems like now we're going through and we're looking at these buildings that we told people, you know, we weren't gonna save because they were old, because, you know, they needed new HVAC, they, there were all these other things. And I totally understand trying to take and keep that retaining wall and looking for all of the information, but it seems like we're now going back and redoing part of the, the work that the building committee did, and Johnny, you could probably answer this better than anyone because you sat on the building committee. And for folks that are kind of looking at this high level, like, wait, wait, we already decided that, you know, 70-year-old building, 1952, 1964, and 78 had to go. And also, I think the larger concern is what is this due to the overall site plan, um, and what is it due to the building committee product, to the high school project? So nobody wants to see that delayed for any reason, um, and also, if we're, it just seems like we worked so hard to get the high school building referendum. It was a wonderful process, we all went to referendum, we were all happy with it, and now there's this project here, but now it seems like we're shifting focus a little bit, and we have two really large projects if we were to go forward with this. So I think people are just like, whoa, wait a second, and they need to be, like, the communication needs to be clear, we need to under, they need to understand what it is that this committee is doing, and more importantly, what all of town council is thinking before we can really get everybody on board. Because it would be a shame, after all of the work for the high school building and potentially this one, to lose, like, public trust in what we're doing and the clarity that we've achieved so far.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. Um, I think, uh, first off, the, uh, high school building project, uh, shouldn't be affected, uh, at all by this project. The only thing that could is the site plan and the potential field. Um, so, one of the reasons where we got the survey out right away, and we're talking about a referendum early next year, is so there will be no effect. And before, uh, keep in mind, all these buildings are used for classroom space until that new building is completed. Uh, so nothing will happen to any of these buildings until the new high school is built. So, uh, I appreciate the comments, I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to get the information, much like we did during the whole high school building project, uh, out to the public so they can make an educated decision and let them know what we're doing is responding to, uh, information that we've gotten as we got it, which is the sole reason we've looked at anything more than the 1928 building, it's new information we got. Other questions?
Can you put the, uh, the map on?
Um, that was one thing I wanted in the public comment about feeling that 1928 was sort of like a, a bait and switch, but what you just said, um, was important. This is a separate project outside of the new high school. It's not going to be used for classroom space, correct? It's all, it's for other projects in town. Um, and then I know you said not to get too far ahead, so I don't want to get too far ahead, but I have a question about, if we relocate that ball field as option two or three, what does that do to that pavilion that just went through, um, TPZ? Would that need to go, or?
I think that would definitely be something we'd have to consider, you know, to try not to have the pavilion go.
Yeah, so we would hold off until we got a referendum or something, you know?
Right.
Make sure that we're not putting something up and tearing down.
Right, you know, and again, we have to, that's why we have to have the people look at the design and see how it would fit and what that pavilion could be used for, and could have been used for something other than a pavilion, yeah.
Yeah, we would all hate to see something go up and then have it come right down.
Right.
So that was my only thing that jumped out when hearing those options.
Right. Just a one, just one comment, um, you know, I think that the building committee talked quite a bit, Rafina, about with the 1928, especially when the support came through with the survey. So now you had the support for the 1928 building, and then we heard quite a bit from people about the gym space, which is different from the high school, like, uh, collegial, like, basketball, it's more like these rec programs. And so then I, to my perspective, not to the committee, I, when I look at this map and I look at the 1928 building, to me, you say, the 1928 you want, and then you want the two gyms in the back, because those are the, what we really, I think truly, as a town, really could use. And then when we find that potentially, that taking down that wall and moving the boiler is gonna be more expensive. So I think that's what led to some of the discussion about it, just to find out what that cost was going to be, because I can appreciate that one of the things that they've kept on, Kat kept on saying to us is that it's the, the student use is much different than what the community use would be for like, especially for like, the gyms, right?
Right, I mean, the, a lot of the, the factors about the building committee was that facility was limiting the way students learn. You can't learn the same way in this facility as you can in a 21st century building. So that's why, where a lot of the options and considerations from the building committee stemmed for it was, the facility was limiting the learning taking place in that building, where this project, it's for recreational space, office space, it's not the same use.
But I respect your, what you're saying, because I think that it is, it's, it's, it's a communication to how to explain that.
Other questions? Brian?
Yeah, thank you, I do have a couple of questions. First, I want to say thank you to the committee for, for doing this work. I understand it's not easy to do, and you came back with some surprising results and some things that were not on my mind and other people's minds for consideration, and I agree that if we're gonna do, look, look at anything, and that was kind of our goal. The first goal was, do we raise it, do we mothball it, or do we renovate it? So I see we're kind of doing that with the rest, and I see where you came to these decisions, and this is the time to look at that, because we don't get a chance to do that again. Uh, I do have a couple of questions that I, that are on my mind, and that is, uh, if we were to do this, I would imagine that this, the cost for maintaining this property would shift to the town away from the school, I'm guessing.
I would say yes.
I think that one of the things that taxpayers would want to know in addition to the cost for, it sounds like we're kind of not really mothballing, but not really renovating, because.
Then, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 1928 building, we're looking to have it not mothballed, we're looking to renovate that space, yes.
And the other parts, we would renovate down the road because obviously the theater needed to be renovated.
Right, it, the thought, the option that we had suggested was that it would be, the option two would be that we would renovate the 1928 building fully, and the rest of it would not be renovated.
Right.
But the, the, the next option says, get prices to see what it would cost, so that in the future, if we did it in a capital expenditure. And basically, what we said, it was even to see if that was feasible, just because we don't know.
And we may be able to use the, the gyms right away.
Right.
Okay, but, uh, the question I'm curious to know is, what would be the tax implications of maintaining these buildings, which are not a part of the original estimate, because we. Because we kind of knew what the tax implications would be. There's a tax implication for maintaining these buildings, I would imagine, down the road. Is that gonna be part of what we're gonna look at? Because I know you guys always look at that stuff, and I appreciate that. Because I think, Tyler, I want to know what the, what the maintenance of these buildings would be down the road.
Yeah, I think, I'll answer and add to it. I think the first part of that is, Brian, yes, when we're looking at what the future cost of renovating, and what that total renovation of all the gymnasium spaces, the theater would be, that gives us the idea going forward of what those future costs are. So we could say, are those tenable costs? You brought up the theater, which is a very good point, because that's how really this whole building process started many years ago. You know, it may be that that is no longer a theater, and we find other uses for it. So it's not that original cost that we all heard about to renovate it to a modern theater, because they will have that in the new high school. So it's trying to figure out what different options are. But I think your initial question was, yes, we need to find out what those costs are, so we can then find out what the tax implications are down the road.
A fair and good estimate, so everyone knows what we're getting into down the road.
Absolutely. Rafina?
I just, one other thought. You know, we just heard about the traffic, and we are stuffing quite a bit on one footprint. So we're gonna have the high school, which will be for our students, and, you know, some rec programs. If we were to go forward, and let's say we pass the referendum, and everyone's like, okay, 1928 building for rec space. I'm just concerned, and I think some residents are also concerned of, about the traffic and also about the space. Because as you know, currently, the space is at a premium. And when we were doing the high school building project, you know, we were trying to, like, maximize the, the parking for the kids and for the folks that are going there. And there just didn't seem to be enough. So how would, I guess the overall thought of mine is, how are we gonna account for all of this? Because it just seemed, again, if there was some catastrophic thing, either at the, you know, pinch point and Route 4, or on the other side of Unionville, our town, that's it. Like, nobody could get in and out. And we're putting a lot, a lot of stuff on this one footprint in the middle of town. So I've, I've heard that from a number of constituents. I just, I don't know that there's anything that you can say to it now, we haven't gone down the line. I just, I just wonder about that.
I, I think that's something absolutely that the building committee's gonna have to look at. You know, some of the things to point, the parking on the, on the site, if it's a bigger than just the 1928 building, how is the parking gonna fit? All of that, and again, I think to Johnny's point, is it's kind of a fact-finding mission that's gonna come back to the town council to say, these are viable options, or they're not viable options. And I think that, to your point on some of the site and things like that, to Brian's point on the tax implication, what the cost would be. All of that is what's gonna be, this building committee's gotta come back to the council with these, look at these options, and what the costs are, and what their recommendations are. So the council has a broad base on all the different things that you have all mentioned.
And I'll add to that one piece. If, let's say it was the biggest of all projects, which is saving the, the whole block there and moving the town hall up there. The added people from the town hall are not added, they're just moving from one place on this campus to another. And that's, they're here regardless. The probate court, which needs new space, is here regardless, the Board of Education is here regardless. The addition that we're talking about is rec league and things like that, which are oftentimes in off-hours also, which is just a benefit from the traffic side of it. It's not like all this traffic is then coming in at the beginning of the school day or the end of the school day. Not to say this won't be, you know, we've got to look into it and find out. But I think that might defray some of the issues of traffic going forward. So, other questions? Okay. All right. We had a motion, and we had a second, and we had discussion. So, we are now voting to approve the ad hoc building committee's recommendation.
Yep.
As presented.
Yep, in the packet.
Which will lead us to go forward and get more information.
Can we not vote on the separate option one, two, and three? You're, you have to vote?
It's just one package, yeah.
Okay.
That's the recommend, I mean, you could make an amendment to drop, drop the, some of them out, certainly, you could move that. My personal feeling would be, let's get all the information before we start taking things out. But if you want to make that amendment, you certainly may.
Okay.
Oh, I could just ask one more question.
Yeah, Brian?
When are we going to establish that next building committee?
How quickly did we think we could actually do that?
We were thinking at either the first May meeting, which was the next May, May meeting, because the charge is already basically established. It would just be getting members. And if, if we're not ready by then, we would say the second May meeting. But our, our ad hoc committee basically said that by June, we should have a building committee set up. To meet the timing for the referendum.
Okay, do we know what we want, the makeup of that committee?
That's coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, Kate?
Is there, what was the reason for having an option two and an option three? I mean, I, I understand, like, I, I understand the language as written, but is there a reason to not just get the information on what that would cost? Does it seem to me it was just sort of, one was to put these other things that we're going to do on hold, and to not sort of spell out that that's our intention, what we're using it for, you know, to renovate down the road? Is it really just to get the 1928 taken care of, and keep the options open for the stuff down the road?
I think, and correct me, anyone on the committee if I'm wrong, but the option two would be, there would still have to be some work done to get to the option two.
Yep.
It would basically be the minimal work. So the option two is, what is the minimal to make that all usable, the whole block usable? And option three is, what would be future costs? Is that, Ed, Johnny, Kathy?
I think, and again, I'm, I'm, correct me if, Mike, I'm not sure of your question. I think option two, the reason why they wanted option, we wanted option two, is because there's a strong feeling that option two is actually going to be less expensive than option one.
Okay.
And so, because of doing the 1928 building, both of them, it's gonna be a full renovation. And we got a, a price from the building committee, they said $10 million. But how much of that $10 million was moving a big boiler and taking down a wall and putting up another wall?
Yeah, that, that I understood, and just from very, you know, bird's eye view of it, completely makes sense to me. And, and option two and option three, they make a lot of sense to me. But option three is essentially saying, let's get the costs on, on future things we can do to this big block of space.
Right.
And two says, we're keeping 1928, this other stuff is gonna be there, but we'll make plans for that down the road.
Right, and then, but, and then, just again, you don't like option three, is that what you said, because?
No, no, I think that, I, I think essentially option, I, I think option three makes more sense. I don't know why we, you know, I could just do the, figure out what we can do with that space now, so people really know what we're getting into. I would just hate to get something where people think that we're keeping this block of space for the 1928 building. And then in two years, when we say, well, we want to use this other space for this, like, give everybody every, all the information out as much as possible, but.
One, again, if I'm wrong, tell, let me know. But one of the issues that we have is that time isn't our friend.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, I get you.
Time isn't our friend, and so we need to, so we don't disrupt the other project. We just wanted to kind of get a real broad estimate that if we found out that renovating the other spaces over, you know, maybe we put it in our capital plan for 10 years, it's like, very, very expensive. They can just say, timeout, we're not doing it. But trying to just get kind of a broad brush to see if the council's willing to do it. And it has to be done relatively quick, because then the, the option you guys pick, we gotta get that to referendum.
Got you.
So I think, before, let me just finish that one, to finish that off. If it was decided by the town that option two was what they wanted to do, by having option three in there, you would already know what the future costs were. So that would be a decision that we're gonna take, I'd hate to compare it to all the additions that we saw on the high school there. We're gonna take the, the cheaper way out. But we're gonna not spend the money right now, but we know what the cost will be.
Yeah.
So if the decision was made that we're just gonna do option two right now, just, and have that big block here, we already would know what the costs are. So I think we're just trying to be fully transparent, so people really understand the different options involved. I think that's what we were talking about, two and three.
And the future cost, and then, my understanding is, is that the, the gyms, really for recreational programs, don't need any, they can be used right away.
Brian?
Yeah, I was just thinking about, we're just gonna look at the costs, not how to pay for it during the building committee, or is that gonna be part of the discussion?
I think when you, when it comes to the council making a choice on their option, you're gonna have to know what some of the costs are, the tax impact on, some of that is definitely gonna be part of the equation, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking about the, the application of ARPA funds, if that's the appropriate.
Yeah.
Application of those funds.
Right, that would be part of it, yeah.
Absolutely, part of this discussion, yes. Any other questions? Rafina?
Okay. Just to be the fly in the ointment, I'd like to make an amendment to Nick's option three. You don't, I'm sure nobody will agree with me, but here's why. I feel like we've already taken a look at these older buildings, 1952, 1964, 1978. These gyms are, like, they're in serviceable shape, but nobody's talking about the long-term maintenance of them. The site plan, the concerns with the high school site plan are, are really big to me. I don't know that we can legitimately look at all of these options. It feels like we're redoing a lot of the work that we already decided as a town, we didn't want to take on. So I'd like to make the amendment to not look at option three, one and two. I totally understand wanting to look at the 1928 building, and because of the wall, and because of whatever is behind it, that, you know, it may, makes sense in the long term to keep some of that, that building. But I, yeah, I'm not in favor of option three.
Okay. We have an amendment to the motion. Do I have a second?
I don't even get seconded.
I will say, yeah, of course.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I will not vote in favor of nixing option three, because I feel like if we're gonna go ahead and investigate option two, and not go the full investigation of what that could cost in the future. So what you're saying is, let's look at keeping 1928, let's, option two says, let's keep 1928 and the other space without touching it. But you're not gonna go one step and actually figure out what that could cost you in the future. And I think that would actually be a disservice, because if that cost in the future is so high, that would be a consideration for me to say, you know, at a future date before we recommend a referendum, to say, this is just way too much money. But if I don't have that information in front of me, and I'm just looking at what 1928 or 1928, and let's just button up that little corner by the cafeteria, then I don't think I have the proper information to make that decision. So I would, I would be against it for that reason.
May I just respond?
Sure.
When we all talked about this months ago, about the ad hoc committee, it was with the intention of just preserving the 1928 building. And that was the charge that we gave the committee. And then all of a sudden, we added this other information. And I get it, people were like, there, there, we need space for recreation. I just feel like we need to find some additional space somewhere else. That, that there's just too much on this one campus that we're all trying to fit in. And I am in favor of looking at preserving the 1928 building, but that alone. Because that was what the charge of the committee was. I understand trying to fact-find, I just feel like we're muddling the two big projects, and people are going to start rebelling, as we're, we're seeing. And I'm hearing that people are just like, well, you know, we've done this already. But we haven't, it's two separate projects. And getting over and communicating to people what it is that we're now doing, it seems like we're repeating ourselves. So that's why I asked to amend.
If I can ask a question through the chair to Rafina, then why would you not offer an amendment to eliminate option two and three?
I actually would, but I was, you said that we needed to do the, for the wall, and that it would cost less. And I'm all in favor of saving money. And if that we can do in the long run, yes, if we can save the, the one wall. But yeah, I would be in favor of nixing two and three, and just having, and just looking at the option of retaining the 1928 building as a standalone.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Johnny had said. And I also, also agree with, as I just mentioned, that I, three feels like two A to me. So I, I don't think you get one without the other, I think. I would keep them all, just for the option, to get the information. We're not, we're not, you know, like we said, once it's torn down, it's torn down. So to not get the information seems foolish.
May I just, I'm just smarting from the last, from our referendum, just, it's not even a year ago, June 3rd, I still remember the day we were all celebrating. We worked so hard, and I would hate for anything, and also to, to make this 1928 building with people who seem so in favor of, for that not to pass referendum. Because people are feeling, well, you know, we spent this money for the high school building project, and now here we are again, a year later, asking you to vote on another referendum. So it just feels like, you know, if there was more time, and we had a little bit more leeway, and we didn't have the ARPA funds, you know, and the deadline to spend that, those funds, I feel like we could do just a more thorough job and get people on board a little easier, and explain what we were thinking and doing all that. I don't think we have, you know, the wealth of time that we did perhaps with the high school building project, so.
You're, you're absolutely correct there. I think the, we don't have a great deal of time in this process. It was, it, we had much more time to explain the story of the high school and why that would happen. The, in looking at the 1928, where, you know, I think we all see, there are huge numbers of people wanting to save that building. I think, taking the, the next steps to find the question, this is not gonna change any of the timeframe on the high school building. If it's just the 1928 building, we're still going to referendum. So the same timeframe is in place, whether it's the 1928, or whether it's the extended version of it. So that timeframe doesn't change. I just feel strongly that it would be wrong of us not to present the public with what the options are. And it could be that we end up going to referendum in April and May, saying, we recommend just the 1928 building. And that's, we'll have further discussions on this. All this discussion and this vote is, do we want to go through on these recommendations to say, what will the cost be, and what would this look like? So we can then be fully transparent to the public, so they can make their decision. And that's why I feel strongly about keeping it as it is.
Just as a note, we could be here in six or eight months recommending a referendum to take everything out. So nothing is off the table. This is strictly to gather the information, so that we can make an educated decision, and we have one shot at this. And then, and when that, we do through, we'd be doing a disservice by not recommending at a future date, a referendum that we felt had the best interest of the town. Because if it fails, there's nothing. Because a failure of a referendum means there's no project, because that timeframe catches up. So again, this tonight is strictly to formulate a committee to look at every avenue and everything that's involved, whether it's taxes, whether it's cost implications in the future, whether it's the uses, the public input, because these will be public meetings, that the public will have the opportunity to come in and comment at every aspect of all the discussions that are made.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
And I can understand what you're saying, Rafina, about people being confused, it's this, it's that. But when we sold the high school project, we walked those streets, that wasn't an option yet to us about saving the 28, what can possibly be done with everything. The goal was, do we have enough support to build the high school? We got that support. And now through the public survey, people are saying, look into it, let's find out. We have a little bit of time, I think we should take advantage of it, because like everyone's saying, if it's gone, you can't replace it. So if we can go ahead and look at the whole thing, get some solid numbers, and say, here's A, here's B and C, here's some solid numbers for us, I'll understand. And then we can really say, yeah, this is smart, yes, not smart, and go from there.
If, but if you do recall, we did take the 1928 building out, right?
Yes.
So originally, it was slated for demolition, and then because of public.
Demolition, mothball, it was those three options that we're talking about.
No, but originally, we was, that, there was.
No, the only cost that was put in was for demolition, but it was never decided what would happen to it. It was not slated for demolition, as someone stated earlier today, public comment. It was actually, that was sort of the placeholder. It was $500,000 to demolish it at that point in time, and we would decide at a later date. Because we already saw in the early days, I'm sure you remember, people saying, they're gonna tear down the 1928 building. When we hadn't made that decision, we said, let's disconnect the two, so we don't get that confusion. And, which I think was a positive in, in the high school referendum vote.
Right, so I think for most people, they care about the 1928 building. But it just seems, again, looking at the other buildings that we decided that weren't perfect for learning, or even habitable for learning. Now we're taking another look at those, and it seems duplicative. That's my only point, and that's why I was suggesting the amendment. I completely understand everybody's opinion, I just don't exactly share it at this time.
Good. Any other comments on the amendment? So right now, we're voting on the amendment to take out option three from our options here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails, yes. Missed something?
No, I was just gonna.
Any abstentions, any abstentions? Okay, so it's one to six. There was only one aye, correct? Okay, just checking. Okay, so we will now go back to voting on the original motion, which was the recommendations of. which was the recommendations of 1928 ad hoc committee as presented. Any other further questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Nay, okay, the motion passes six to one. Moving on to item D three.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the attached statement of needs from the 1928 ad hoc building committee.
Second?
We have a motion, a second.
Kathy?
One of the things, again, that's what the ad hoc committee did learn, and we did a, a high level needs assessment, and that's what we were charged to do. And I think one of the things that came out very strongly, which again led us to our, led us to the recommendations we made, was that we needed more gym space. And that's one of the big things in our recommendations. And so that's, again, kind of going back a little bit to what we were talking about just before, is that when the committee was talking about different things, it came to a point where we were charged, if we're going to keep this building, what we were going to use it for. And things were coming out, as the town hall operations need more space, and we, we have satellite offices all over the place, that we could move people all into the 1928 building. Our recreational offices are in like three different places, put them all together. Community use, throughout town, there's a lack of space for community use, including meeting space, event space, non-for-profit space, art and business and incubator use. There's no question that the community is always looking for council chambers, the different rooms, the police station, rooms to do different things, and it's just not available. Space for additional storage, as many of you know, is that the town by law does not, is, can't get rid of very many records at all. And even though we're computerized and everything goes, you still have to have hard copies of things. And it takes years and years to be able to destroy records, and many records you never are able to destroy. So there's a constant battle of where we put our records and how we store them. And so this was another idea that for the 1928 building, what we could be using the, the space for. So the committee did a high level space assessment. These were the things that they came up with, the town hall operations, including town hall. The other idea is the probate office. Probate office here is located in the town hall. I'm not sure if anyone has been in there lately, but they're jam-packed in the, the area. The, the judge uses this council chambers and other council chambers for different things. There's security issues that come along with it. So the thought was, is that the probate office could move out of the town hall, thus freeing up more space for us here in the town hall, and them having a better space up at the 1928 building. Social services, the red building on this campus is our social services department. That building, again, not ADA, accessible upstairs, some different things for the social service, not really enough space, putting social services and recreation all somewhat in the same area. All of that in the 1928 proper building. So under the recommendations of our statement of needs, based on our needs assessment, the space needs of the town, the stakeholders, these were the things, the needs of the town are. And so, again, town hall use, community use, gym space, and space for additional storage. And it's recommended that the ad hoc committee, under section 53 dash three of the Farmington County Code, that the town council consider this statement of needs for the 1928 building, and establish a building committee to engage an architect to complete the conceptual design, and a third-party cost estimator to provide preliminary pricing for the renovation of the 1928 building as a standalone building, with the above being in that building. Then engage the architect to complete a conceptual design and third-party cost estimator to provide the preliminary pricing for the renovation of the 1928 building, and the retention of 1952, 64, 78 portions for the purpose of utilizing gym space with no immediate renovations. Three, receiving the range of preliminary cost estimates for the full renovation of the 1952, 64, and 78 portions. Again, what we've just discussed, if option two is ultimately chosen. And four, receive a range of preliminary cost estimates for the demolition of the town hall, the replacement of the ball field located on the town hall site, and any associated site work. So based on our ordinance, if you're going to start a building committee, the first thing in the process is that you approve a statement of needs. The next step would be, you would get a charge, and you would establish the building committee. So the thought for the timeframe, Brian, per your question, was, the thought was, tonight, that a statement of needs would be approved. At the next meeting, a charge would be established, and the membership, like, drawn up, like, what the membership would look like, whether you guys would be ready to appoint people at that time. If you were, that would be great, if not, it would be the second May meeting where you would finalize it.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the statement of needs?
I just have one. Is it possible that we could amend it, just to say that as part of the charge, that we explore and find out an estimate of the tax implications of these different things, so that the townspeople can discuss what that implication might be, at least the information they would need?
I think that would go in the charge of the committee.
Oh, okay.
This is just the statement of the needs.
Oh, okay.
The needs.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay, new business, I do not believe we have any this evening. Executive session, also have none. I will leave you with a quote before I ask for our adjournment from Herodotus. Very few things happen at the right time, and the rest don't happen at all. The conscientious historian will correct these defects. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the April 26, 2022 town council meeting.
Second? We have a motion, a second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Eight thirty-six.